All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant, on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power, one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
Let's get started. This is an absolutely amazing, amazing crowd. What a wonderful number of people to come out tonight. Welcome, and thank you so much for coming to our forum on the new Greenfield Public Library. And thank you trustees, excuse me, town council, for scheduling this event, and participating in this event. I'm Doris Cowdery, I am the Chair of the Board of Trustees of the Greenfield Public Library. I do sit on the Building Committee, and I sit on the Greenfield Public Library Foundation. Over here, to my far right, is Edward Lynn, and is the Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees. He is also the Chair of our Building Committee, and he's also the Chair of our Advocacy Committee. And then, that's our guy, that's him. And then, probably most everyone knows the person in the middle, that is absolutely wonderful, Library Director Ellen Boyer. And then, next we have Dan Pallata. Dan is our Operations Project Manager. Dan was the Project Manager for our new community center, and that project finished on time and under budget. You can see why we'd invite Dan back. And he's also a joy to work with. And next we have Phil O'Brien, Phil is our Architect. Phil has massive amounts of experience with library projects in the state of Massachusetts. He also is a joy to work with. And so, we're looking so forward to going forward with this library, working with these fantastic people, and bringing all of you a 21st century, state-of-the-art, phenomenal library. Thanks for being here. And now, I'm going to turn this over to Edward Lynn.
Thank you, Doris. And thank you, everybody, for coming. This is quite an amazing turnout. At last count, there are over 300 people here in this auditorium. So, thank you so much, especially on the night where the driving is just not ideal. But, again, thank you. And thank you to our councilors for coming. I see Councilor Ricketts, Councilor Mayo, Councilor Dolan, Councilor Stempel, Councilor Gilmore, Councilor Wheeler, Councilor Sun, and Councilor Mas. Thank you so much, we really appreciate it. Who did I miss? Oh, okay. And while I'm saying thank yous, there are plenty of other people I really want to thank. And the first is Mayor Martin, for his support of our project. And I know, I saw him earlier tonight, he's probably hiding somewhere in the audience. I'd also like to thank someone who's not here tonight, who behind the scenes really helped to make this happen. Two people, really. One is Town Clerk Kathy Scott, and the other is the Stage Manager here, Brendan Leowolf. Both of them in some ways are the unsung heroes. And the other unsung heroes, seriously, are the over 100 volunteers, who have been working on this project for, believe it or not, almost six years. This has been a dream that this is a dream that we've had. Well, actually, I came across an editorial in the 1988 Greenfield Recorder, talking about the need for a new library. So, this is a dream that has been ongoing. In fact, our library was built just at the end of George Washington's tenure as President of the United States. So, our Advocacy Committee has been working really hard to try to get our councilors to understand about the tremendous amount of support there is in this community for our new library. And as of early this week, we've had an online and a paper petition drive, asking residents of Greenfield to sign our petition in support of our library. And as of early this week, we, 1,348 Greenfield residents, have signed our petition. And in fact, every precinct has at least 100 signatures. So, this is all throughout our town, the small precincts, the large precincts, all over Greenfield. And sure, you could tell when you drive through town, you can see some of the lawn signs throughout. So, I wanted to tell you what to expect tonight. The first thing we will do is, I will give a history of our project, and then you will hear a presentation from our Architect Program Manager, and Ellen. And when that is finished, we will answer some of the questions that the councilors have asked us, submitted in advance. And then, we're going to open it up to you all. We're going to give anybody here who wants, and hopefully you've signed up, the opportunity to come forward and either express your support for our library, or ask questions that you may have. But we are going to try to limit it to three minutes a person, or else we might be here until after midnight. And I don't think anybody really wants to do that. So, I want to go back, because I was actually pretty blown away when I went back to look at the history of our project. And it began in 2012, back at the time when Doris was still trustee president, and I think I was Vice President then, I'm not sure. But, and it was that time that we were looking to hire a new Library Director. And one of the criteria that we wanted was someone who had an experience in building a new library for their town. And while Ellen had many, many, many qualities that attracted us to her, one of them was that she had had that experience. So, she's here, we're all really happy she's here, and she's really been the driving force of this project since 2012. So, in 2013, we came in front of the council. And at that time, we wanted to file for a $50,000 planning and construction grant through the Commonwealth. But we needed the permission of the council to do it, because the town needed to commit to a $25,000 match. So, we spoke in front of the council, there was a debate. And my memory was that the vote, we had either 11 or 12 positive votes at that council. So, we proceeded, in early 2014, we applied for the grant. And later that year, we were awarded the $50,000 grant. We had to go before the council a second time. We needed their vote to accept the grant, and they did. And I believe that vote, again, was either 11 or 12 councilors in support of our project. After that, we got to work, because we realized that this is a library for all of us. This isn't a consultant's library, this isn't Ellen's library, my library. This is Greenfield's library. And one of the first things we did was establish an Advisory Committee, made up of 24 citizens of Greenfield, from diverse populations, and got together, and they met twice a month for 18 months. And part of what they did was to go around, to see all the new libraries that have been built in Western Mass, talk to library directors to see what worked, what didn't work, did a community survey, that was both online and in person, and 618 people responded to that survey. We also had public forums, because we wanted to hear from the community, and we wanted to shape our program based on the community's input. We then, in 2015, the Building Committee was formed. Names were submitted to Mayor Martin, and he nominated the names, and they were approved by the council. We then got to work as a Building Committee. The other thing is, the trustees hired a fundraising consultant. Because we wanted, we are aware that the town is going to have to come up with a good chunk of money to get this project forward. And we wanted to try to ease the burden on the town as much as possible. So, we hired a fundraising consultant, who did a feasibility study, interviewed many, many people in town, and concluded that we could raise $2 million in support of this project. We've since created a foundation, they are busy at work. They've raised close to $3,000, excuse me, $300,000 to date. But let me tell you, that what we're hearing over and over again is tremendous, tremendous enthusiasm for this project. People want to contribute, but they want to see the council vote yes first. So, we are, everything we've done, and all the work that we've done, makes us believe that we will be able to reach our fundraising goal of $2 million. So, the Building Committee got to work, we hired a Project Manager, we hired an architect that was Phil's firm. We then went through a process of looking to select a site. We had public forums again, and one of the things we heard time and time again was, the community wanted our library to be downtown. We then, our architect in the Building Committee did an analysis as to whether or not we can renovate the old building, or what that would look like compared to a new building. And it became pretty clear, when we went through their analyses, that it would actually cost more to build, to renovate the old building than to build the new building. And that's one of the reasons that we chose to go forward with the new building. So, we then, in 2017, after having done our work to develop our plan, we submitted our grant to the state, it was a 300-page grant. Lots of people took part in it, but the person who wrote it was our Library Director, and she clearly did a wonderful job, because we were awarded the money. So, in July of 2017, we were awarded a provisional grant of $9,378,183. And the following July of this year, we were then put up number one on the waitlist. And the following July of this year, we were given the grant, subject to a vote of the Town Council. So, that's where we are right now. And let me, I know that Mr. Pallata is going to be talking about some of the financials, but I just want to try to sort of frame the financial discussion going forward. So, I know that people are concerned about how can the town afford to pay $10 million. So, the bond that the council needs to vote for is actually 19.5 million. But everybody needs to understand, and I know the council understands, that from that needs to be subtracted the 9.4 million. So, the most the town could possibly be on the hook for is 10.1 million. But from that, we could, depending on how successful the fundraising drive is, that number could be reduced. Depending on the, moving forward with the design plan of the library, it may be that the cost of the library could be reduced somewhat. Dan was our Project Manager at the Senior Center, and he has reminded me continuously that he brought that in under budget, and he didn't spend all of the town's money. So, and I expect that there'll be certain people in this audience, if we do go forward, who will hold him to that going forward. But, the other thing, there's another way that the cost of the town could be reduced, and that is by the sale of the old building. Now, I know that just bringing that up scares people. That's obviously a discussion that will take place down the road. But what I can say publicly is, that there is a business in town, who's been in this town for a long, long time, who has an interest in buying this building, and maintaining it, and keeping it the way it looks on forever. So, that there could be a plan in place, so that beautiful building will continue to remain, but not to be a library. So, the other thing I just wanted to mention is, that when we go through this analysis, I want to remind you, and suggest to the councilors, that this is not a question of, do we spend 10 million, or maybe 9 million, or nothing. That is not the choice that we have. I think it became clear to everyone who was at that council meeting in November, who saw it on television, who read about it, that we have an obligation in Greenfield to make sure that our public buildings are accessible and compatible with ADA. Now, you'll hear from Dan and Phil tonight. They did an analysis of the present library, and they'll give you some indication of what that would cost. And they're going to tell you that it's going to be between 7 and 8 million dollars. So, I would submit, that when all is said and done here, what we're really looking at is a choice. Spending 10 million or less for a brand-new 21st-century library, that will bring more people downtown, that will be a gem of our community, the pride of everyone? Or, do we spend 7 to 8 million dollars to upgrade a building that was never meant to be a library, that will be inadequate the day that the work is done? And finally, let me just say, that everyone agrees, that with regard to these numbers, that the first bond payment for the library would not occur until the year 2025. So, with that, I will turn the podium over to Dan Pallata from P3.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Ed. I'm pleased to be here again before Greenfield, and we hope you enjoy what we hope is enough information for you to make a decision on this project. Why is the project needed? The project is needed because the library has a tremendous amount of deficiencies. First and foremost, we continually talk about ADA, but it's more than just ADA. ADA is commonly referred to as Disability Access. But it's beyond that. It's lighting for those that have vision impairments. It's sound acoustics for those that have hearing impairments. It's the structural issues of the building. As you know, books weigh a lot, and if you walk through the library, you can see where the strain is on the building. Even the addition in the back is showing a little bit of strain in its years of use. A modern library is not a repository of books. It's not about books. A modern library is a lot more than that. We have done libraries all over the state, we've done studies all over the state. And when the modern library is completed, it increases the amount of people that go to the library by a factor of two and a half the day it opens, settles down to be at least double. And most of it is young adults and children, who need a place to do things that they can't do at school or after school. This facility will have those things. There's no program space that is adequate in the current library. There are eight computers in the library squeezed into 143 square feet for a town of 18,000. The seating can only accommodate 10% of the 500 people that visit the library each day. The site is not ADA-compliant, the building is not ADA-compliant. The floor space in children's and young adults, the shelf, has no shelving, has inadequate shelving. The picture book space in the children's area is in the old Bookmobile garage. This is a building that has been really used to its max, and creatively, I might add, by the Library Director, to squeeze everything she possibly can for you and your children. There are security issues, you have multiple entrances, we all know you can get in one way or the other way. A modern library, everyone enters through the front, and everybody exits through the front, so that the library staff can have a secure environment within the library. The restrooms, I don't even need to go into it if you've gone to the library, I don't even know, I didn't know what to say on that one. The grant, I want to talk a little bit about the grant. As Ed indicated, you were number one on the provisional waitlist. The town of Kingston and the town of Wayland gave you a gift. And that was a gift of a vote no. When they voted no, you got your money. And that's why you rose on the list, because those two communities voted no. And should you vote no, there's going to be a lot of happy people next Thursday in the town of Littleton, who's next on the list. The Library Board of Commissioners has created this program in 1986. The first grant round was in 1987. And they have helped 236 different municipalities, out of the 351 municipalities. That's almost 2/3 of the towns in Massachusetts that have received assistance from this grant program. You were awarded, as Ed indicated, almost 9.4 million dollars. The MBLC will not be awarding grants for a long time. The program is capped at 20 million a year, and the bond authorization for this particular program ends with Greenfield. So, the next library on the list is waiting for the next bond authorization from the legislature. It will come, it has every time since 1986, but it's a delay. And every time it's a delay, costs go up, and we'll get into that. Ed? I'm sorry, Doris? Ellen? We've practiced so much, my mind is jealous, it's jealous, come on up. It's your turn. She's going to talk a little bit about some of the statistics on the library.
My computer's not Wow. So, they've introduced me, they've told you that I'm the Library Director, but what they haven't told you is how oh, of course, sorry. So, they've introduced me, they've told you that I'm the Library Director, but they haven't told you how proud I am to be the Director of the Greenfield Public Library. Sorry. I feel very lucky. Every day, I go to work with creative, compassionate, and dedicated individuals who staff our library. Once a month, I meet with seven people who represent the Library's Board of Trustees, who are amazingly dedicated, and you guys are all here tonight because of a lot of work that they've done. And then, there's the Friends of the Library, I don't even know where to start with those guys. This community, so, I'm lucky to work at the library, but I'm also lucky to live in this community that uses and values its library. Do you know that a public library is the only community asset that's designed for use by everyone in your community? Everyone, regardless of anything, regardless of age, political affiliation, religious beliefs, economic status, regardless of anything, everyone is welcome in the Greenfield Public Library. And we are the most heavily-trafficked municipal building. You can see the stats up on the screen. Last year, we were visited 160,000 times. We hosted 223 programs with over 9,000 attendees. And you guys borrowed 200, over 243,000 items from us. That's pretty cool, you use and value your library, thank you. So, I've been a librarian for decades. And during the course of my career, I've seen the role of, the fundamental role of public libraries change. We are no longer warehouses for books. We are access, we are an access point to information that is dispensed in both traditional and non-traditional ways. We've become active participants in the health and well-being of our communities. Yes, public libraries still have books, but we also have DVDs, we have audiobooks, we have musical CDs, we have digital content that you can download and stream. We have programs for all ages, not just storytimes, those have been around for a long time. But we host the First Wednesday's Lecture Series. We have, sorry, can't remember the names, lots of other programs, series, for every age group in our community. And libraries, when I first started, didn't have computer access. Now, that's an essential part of the service we provide. So, I'm wearing a green button tonight, and I see a lot of you are as well. The logo on the button says, "Imagine a new library," same logo that's on the balloons. So, let's do that for just a minute. Imagine a new library where everyone enters through the front door, where everyone can return their materials to a book drop, where everyone can comfortably browse every shelf in the library, where everyone can easily access our public restrooms. Imagine a new library where storytime takes place in the children's room. What a novel thought. And the kids are surrounded by books. Where children can be creative in an area that was specifically designed for them, that has child-sized furniture, washable floors, and a cleanup sink. Where we have enough room for local school classes to visit comfortably and safely. And where teens, yeah, I see you guys out there, have a dedicated space that you help us design. Imagine a new library with enough computers to meet the demands in our community, and at the computer, enough space around the user to give that user some privacy. Imagine a library with a makerspace, where people of all ages come together to dream and create. With group study rooms, equipped with digital capability, where kids can code and and learn robotics. For those history buffs in the audience, imagine a new library with a dedicated local history room with the right temperature and humidity conditions to preserve those irreplaceable materials we now have stored in the attic. Imagine a new library with reading areas for both quiet and contemplative work and read-aloud use, with self-checkout stations if you'd prefer to check out your materials that way, with onsite parking that has dedicated handicap spaces, and with unlocked public restrooms that have more than one stall. So imagine that new library, because that's what we've presented to you in our plan. And those are the things that we can't do or don't have in our current facility. Remember those creative and compassionate and dedicated individuals I told you that I worked with every day? Well, yesterday, when I could not come up with what I should say tonight, I reached out to my colleagues, and they helped me with these comments tonight. This is our collective effort. And one of our colleagues, his name is Jeremiah Rude, he wrote something that I asked if I could share with you tonight because I've found it to be so powerful. And now I need my glasses. Jeremiah says, "As a symbol, I think the new library says something different and better about the community of Greenfield than the current building does. The new building speaks to increased access, openness to new ideas, and a brighter future for our community. A town or city who chooses to invest in its library says something to the wider world, and that something is really important." So let's imagine a new library, a better symbol, and a brighter future for Greenfield.
I'll get it. Our designer is going to give you a walk-through of the floor plans and the site plan of the library that is in the grant application.
Hi, my name is Phil O'Brien from Johnson &amp; Roberts. Everybody hear me okay? Okay, thank you. This is a site plan. It's where we're going to start, but I thought I'd back up a little bit and tell you a little bit about library design in general. As Dan and Ed mentioned, Johnson &amp; Roberts Associates has designed lots and lots of public libraries, lots of different communities around in Massachusetts and the surrounding states. But this is our first time through with Greenfield. And so that's why it's so exciting for me to be here and to see so many people that have come out in support and interest in the library, because even though we've designed lots and lots of library buildings, we want to design this one for Greenfield. And so we need to hear from Greenfield what they want. We are right near the end of what's called the schematic design phase of the project, and it's kind of the way it sounds. We're looking at big-picture things, where things kind of go in the building, where the building might sit on the site, and how these spaces relate to one another, and what works for you all. So the more input that we can get from you all, the better we can make it. After the schematic design becomes design development, and we'll develop the design that we decide works the best for all of us here in the community, and then we'll do the contract documents and build the building. So there's still the rest of the schematic design phase to go, and another design phase called design development. So there's a long way to go. This is a schematic design that basically proves that the programmatic requirements that Ellen and her staff have put together will work in this place. But things are still flexible. There's only a couple of things that you need to comply with in order to make sure that you maintain your grant. Needs to stay on this site right here, and all the programmatic requirements that we showed that went into this grant need to be the same as they are in here. But that's not to say that all these things could still move around. And with that said, I'll kind of walk you through that with the understanding that we want to hear from you all about what works and what doesn't, and what will make the best library for Greenfield. So there's your existing building. There's the original house, kind of sits right in there. And then there was a couple of little wings that were added onto the house. And then there was a larger addition put on the back that's got book stacks in it, and meeting rooms downstairs, and an entrance at the rear. And then this funny little shaped spot that was kind of added to last, and that's the Bookmobile garage that you heard about. The children's department kind of sits over in there, out into the Bookmobile area. So the idea here is that we put this building, this new two-story building, right on the side there where there's a parking lot. That's the spot where the hot dog stands is right now.
Will he stay?
I don't know. It's not really up to me. But that's just to help orient you. And so the idea is new sidewalk in there, a new entrance that comes in to the first floor, and then there's also an entrance with parking at the rear with a sidewalk and a ramp that comes in, and there's also an entrance off of the side. Both of these entrances end up right in the center of the building, and I'll zoom in a little bit for you and show you what that's all about. Okay? Can I get that next slide? Can I get that next slide, my friend? Can I get the next slide? Dan told you, we practiced this for weeks. Okay, so this is the floor plan. Now, this has been turned 90 degrees. I'm sorry for that, but it's so that we can get it as big as possible. In this plan, the street runs right along in there. The driveway between the existing building and this new building goes right in there. And so we have an entrance right where that red arrow is here, and then an entrance that comes in off of the sidewalk. Both of these entrances end up right here in the main lobby of the building. The circulation desk, the main circulation point, is right there where the people can keep an eye on who's coming and going. That's kind of ground central for your library. And so right off of that space, we want to make it real easy when folks come in to know where they're going. If you walk in off the street, or if you come in off of the side, this is the entrance into the children's department. This whole area back here is the children's department, broken down into kind of younger kids over on this side, older kids, book stacks over on that side. There's that storage and craft room that we talked about, the sink in it, and it's an easy clean floor. There's a glass wall that separates the main lobby from the children's department and a set of doors, so you can see what's going on in there. And it's welcoming, the idea is that the doors would stay open for the most part, but if it gets a little loud in there, you can shut those things down. The same going into the storage and craft room. Right off of the main lobby, this is our kind of grab-and-go collection. There's your new books, your audio materials and so forth, your popular collections. For somebody that wants to kind of pick something up and take off, this is where you're going to get your self-check, pick up a book that you have on hold. All that happens right on here, so that you don't need to go any further into the library. We've got a Wi-Fi cafe here where you can sit and have a chat and maybe something to drink. There's support staff for the staff directly behind the desk in this area. We've got a stair that runs up to the second floor right here off of the main lobby, easy to see when you come in the doors. And then we've got an elevator right next to the stair. Public toilets right in here. The idea of these toilets, right off of the main lobby, similar to the ones you have in this building here, airport-style, with no doors on them, right? You can tuck right in there, so they're accessible to all. Two large meeting rooms in the front of the building here, and then the lobby actually shuts down for after-hours, and we can close this off with a gate. And that will secure the elevator, the backside of the library, and the rest of the materials. And we'll give you a little suite of spaces right up in the front of the building so that you can have access and use of the meeting rooms, the two meeting rooms and the public toilets, and this Wi-Fi area after hours when the rest of the library is secure and So if you take the stair or the elevator up to the second floor, we can give you a look at what that looks like. So you enter up into the second floor, coming off the stair of the elevator right up in this area. Right in front of you as you come in, just like when you come in the main entrance, there's a desk up there, reference and information. You need help, information, right at that greeting point, right when you come up the stairs or step off the elevator. Banks of computers, study tables, reference department, right here where it's easy, see, quiet study, meeting rooms. If you need to rent a room, borrow a room, I'm sorry, do a project, get in there with some five or six, eight people for a group study project that you have for a school, you want to have a business meeting, you want to project something on the wall, use a flat screen, have a teleconference, you could do that in one of these rooms. This main space right in here has some of the reader seats, places to have a good read, book stacks tucked along in this area, some quieter spaces along by the windows. Everything here is accessible. This isn't a case where some things are accessible in the buildings, and there are some rooms that we're providing. Every room in the building is accessible to everyone. Every bathroom in the building is accessible. Every chair and table and computer is accessible. Every door and doorway is accessible everywhere in the building. This isn't a case where we're making provisions for accessibility. This is, the idea here is universal access. Everybody uses the same ways to get around the building, everywhere you want to go. This is the teen's space right in here. Again, closing this off with some glass walls, and there's a set of doors on there. Again, we envision those staying open, but if it starts to get a little rowdy and rambunctious in there, I've heard you guys already, you can close those doors down if it's starting to get a little wild in there. Teens, librarians, right next door. And the idea of this space is, and I want to hear from the teens, I want to hear from you folks, I want to hear from the parents, what's going to work best in the teens room? We've done lots and lots of teens rooms, just like we've done lots and lots of children's rooms, but every community is different. We want to hear what works best for you. You want to be able to come into a space like this and create content. You want to make a video that you're going to post on YouTube, you should be able to do that here in your library. You want to make something or build something. You want to start a new business or have a business meeting. You should be able to do that in your library, and we want to make sure that all the spaces that are in here support anything that you can think of. What we kind of think of as a library is the space that you would have in your house if you could afford it and if you had the room. We'd all love to have a place where we could do a project, get away from it all, and concentrate on something, get something done, invent something new, write the next bestseller. We want you to be able to do that here at your library.
The project costs. We thought we'd run down quickly on the project costs. The grant application is based on a project that's exactly... I want to get it to the pen so no one can call me a liar. It's based on $20,959,792. And that is based on the fact that you have $2 million worth of escalation in there, money that if you're at the bottom of the list, you're going to be using. If you're near the top, like we are, we shouldn't be using, we'll only be using portion. So we took the budget and the grant application and tailored it to the minimum amount that you have to appropriate. This cannot be amended down by the council. This has to be appropriated, which is $19,541,296. As was indicated earlier, this breaks down into five categories. I won't bore you with the details on it, but the Commonwealth is paying $9.3 million based on that $19 million number, what they call eligible costs. The tax impact, there is no cost to the town for this project in fiscal year 19, fiscal year 20, negligible cost in fiscal year 21. Why is that? If we're going off to the races, why is there no impact? There's no impact because the way the grant system works with the Mass Board of Library Commissioners is they upfront you money, and to encourage you to do your library. We will receive $1,875,000 one week after the agreement with the Commonwealth is signed, which will probably be about two weeks after the bond authorization. Then, when the project design is completed, we receive another $1,875,637. The following fiscal year, which will be a few months after construction starts, the negligible, we receive a third payment of $1,875,637. This grant application went in because exactly what the library director indicated, there's already been a vote on this, and that was a vote to allow us to apply for the grant. The average cost in fiscal year '24, '25 is approximately $18 per quarter, or $71 for an average household of $186,000 house assessment, based on the numbers that we were provided by your finance department. Ed, do you want to speak to the community pages? That's for you?
Oh, it's for me, huh? This one here. Okay. While we all, all of the library people have thought long that there is a tremendous amount of support in this community for a library, some of us kept saying, "Well, you know, maybe you're just preaching to the choir, so let's sort of reach out to our community and let's sort of hear what the community has to say." And besides those 1,348 signatures that we got, we did a survey. We actually hired Siena College, which does formal surveys, frankly, all over the country. And they did a survey in Greenfield. I forget the number of respondents, but there was statistically relevant results. And 72% of people in Greenfield feel that the quality of the Greenfield Public Library is excellent, excellent or good. 83% believe that the library is important. 75% support building a new library, and 68% would even be willing to pay an increase
That's good. You did a bit. One more thing. Never mind, I forgot what I was going to say. That's okay. It's a little intimidating up here. Upgrades, as we indicated earlier, that the facility will be accessible to all, will have program and meeting space, which is really important to a modern library, quiet study areas, direct and indirect internet access. Anywhere in the library, you'll have Wi-Fi out the wazoo, as well as have the ability to plug your computer in. Outdoor programming spaces, adequate parking, additional space for additional collections. It will be designed as green as possible. That was a directive that we got in the grant round, and it will be a directive that continues forward to try and get as close to possible to net zero. The facility will have a dedicated young adult section. I can't tell you how important this is. It was quite a topic when we did the community center, what to do with the children. This is an opportunity for the children to get their section. The library averages 500 visits a day. East End Public Library, which opened a year ago, increased 250%. Most libraries increased 250% the first year and settled down somewhere between 200 and 225%. You will see increased traffic to this library. Doubling the visits will help with the local businesses in the downtown, going back to Mr. Berlin's, you know, discussion that everyone seems to want to keep it in the downtown area. Athol did their library a few years back, and it has helped Athol spur development in their local downtown. So it's right around the corner if you want to see the result of doing your public library. We're going to do a short video showing you the library today, intertwining it with the library tomorrow, from the view of those that cannot access with ease. Who lost the balloon? So we did receive some questions as we were navigating our way towards tonight's meeting from various counselors, and we have some answers to the questions. Some of the questions were similar, so we took the liberty of trying to combine them together. Counselors, if we didn't get them exact, please email us so we can answer them properly. First question, can the size of the building be changed at all without losing the grant? The answer is yes. It can be shrunk, the program spaces each can be shrunk up to 5%. If you go beyond 5%, you're violating the terms of the grant. At each stage of the next stage that Phil talked about, where public input, we get reviewed by the Commonwealth Board of Library Commissioners for completeness and to the intent of the design grant. So the building could probably get reduced in size 3% overall, but the individual spaces 5%. How aggressive is the capital campaign fundraiser? How much has been raised to date? The capital fundraising group is an independent 501(c)(3). They've raised $300,000, and they're waiting for the vote to go out there and grab more money, and there are a lot of people that want to donate. Would completing the new library, public safety and library, put the city into debt? It's a great question. Yes, the city, like many municipalities, borrows money by bonding in order to fund expensive long-term projects, similar in the way many homeowners use a mortgage to purchase a home. As the city does not have funds saved to pay for these projects in cash, the city will incur debt. The debt for these projects falls within the city's financial policies. Will it be challenging to balance the budget if the library operating costs increase with the new facility? The current library is less than 1% of your operating budget. Every year, budgeting priorities have to be weighed between the mayor and the council, and that's going to go on for eons and has gone on for decades prior. How much could we approve to completely update the current library with an addition so we can fund the public safety complex? This is a really interesting question, and we did dive into this. So we're going to answer the question, and then we're going to talk about it a little bit. The library building is a historic property, and renovations must comply with historic restrictions. An addition in 1995 was rejected by the MBLC. They refused to put money into your building to comply with today's, the standards of 1995. The designer and the OPM, Phil and I, have taken a look, and we predict it's going to be in excess of $7 million to make that building 100% cold compliant. It sounds like a ridiculous number. We checked our math 55 times to Sunday, but the problem is that the value of the building on the assessors' card is about $1,001,000, and if you do more than $300,000 worth of work in that building, you have to upgrade all your systems. When you start doing that in a historic structure, it starts adding up, and you start getting into all sorts of different things. It's on the National Historic Register, there's reviews, there's all sorts of things that have to occur with a building that's on the register, but the primary driver on this is the ninth edition of the building code, which forces you to upgrade things when you do what they consider to be substantial renovations to your work. You did, the town did do a study recently, and a comprehensive study for the entire town. In the library section, because it's the first thing I want to look at, it said the library could be handicap, brought up to handicap accessibility for $63,000. $63,000 might hire the architect to design the bidding specs under the Massachusetts laws regarding bidding under Chapter 149. And I say it with a laugh because the things that are in the book don't even comply with ADA standards. They're asking us to widen to 36 inches when the code's now 48 inches. So I didn't go too deep into the study beyond the fact that the things listed in the library didn't seem to be up to date with the ninth edition of the code. Can the library footprint be reduced to reduce the cost of the funds needed? As I said before, the library building can reduce 5%, which would be a 3% reduction in the overall square footage of the building. Corridors, bathrooms, and that such will not change because they're regulated by occupancy. That's the delta, but the footprint can't change, and the location that you saw it on the site can change, and the configuration of the building can change, and the locations of the rooms in the building can change. And after we're done dealing with the youth and the children, the children's room and the young adult rooms can change, but what can't change is the amount of program space. If the council votes yes, nine counselors, what is the timeline for the library and the fire department? Is the yes vote essentially saying we are also agreeing to the fire department? I am assuming there is a clock on this grant money, so how far along are we on the fire department location? Upon acceptance of the grant through the appropriation of funds, the town has two years to put a shovel in the ground for the new library. This provides the town with the ability to find the solution for the fire station. The library grant does include funds for the demolition of the existing station. That's already in the grant program. The fire station locations are being studied by Pacico Ross, the Planning and Construction Committee of the town, the Public Safety Committee, the fire chief, and the mayor. A report will be presented to the council and the public within the next two months. The council will have to approve funding for the building of a fire station at a later date. Those are basically the questions we received. We also received requests for information, such as the building program from 1995 and the grant program from 1996. We also had a question. If the project in 1995 was amortized to today, would it not be $5.3 million? And the simple answer to that question is no. The project in 1995, the first project, was rejected. The second project was 19,070 square feet, had a construction cost of $128.73. That project today, if you used an escalator, thank you, would be $543.07, or $10,356,000. That's the cost difference. It is a different scale from the average increase of inflation. Construction in Massachusetts, public construction in Massachusetts is expensive. The procedure to do it is expensive, the way that we bid it is expensive, everything about it is expensive, and the costs of libraries have gone up as well as everything else related to construction. The town of North Dartmouth started construction on their library four months ago. The cost of construction is $510 a square foot. They're a year ahead of you. That's how much it's gone up in the year, that $30. The town of Norwell is in bidding, or close to bidding, and their latest estimate has their construction costs at $543, which is identical to the construction costs in Greenfield. Although we're a year later to construction, the costs of construction in this part of the state are less than the cost of construction in the eastern part of the state. I hope that answers those questions, and I hope we've answered the questions of the councils that have come to us, and we want to be responsive and transparent with any question you sent. And I'm going to turn it over to Ed.
So I'm going to take a little liberty here, and I remembered the things that I forgot to say, just quickly. It should come to no surprise to the town council that we're asking for a vote now. In fact, this, there's a capital budget that gets approved by the council every year that projects long-term capital expenses for Greenfield. And the library has been on that budget since at least 2012, beginning at $7.5 million, and then the last couple of years has been $10 million. So it's no surprise that we're getting to this point now, and there's been a plan for it. And in fact, one of the things that Dan mentioned to me is that we are one of the very few towns he has ever come in contact with in Massachusetts that has a financial situation where we are able to build a library without the need for a Proposition 2.5 override. And then I'm going to shut up one last thing. When we talked about the size of the building, the original plan for this building was 32,000 square feet. At one of the public forums, the feedback we got pretty loud and clearly was, "It's too big." And at that point, we really felt as though the rules of the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners wouldn't allow us to reduce the size of the building, but we made that request anyway. We were granted an approval so that the proposal before the council today is 26,800 square feet, a reduction of approximately 16.25%. So it's now the time for the program, for everyone to be heard, for people to come forward to signify your support for the library, your concerns about the library if you have them, and any questions. Again, I would ask that comments be kept to three minutes if possible. Now, I'll say one other thing. There was a little bit of confusion about exactly how tonight would go, whether the members of the council will be sitting up here with us or not. So I feel a little bad that you guys aren't, but what I want to do is make sure that your questions are answered. So before we open it up to everybody else, even though Rudy, Rudy Rinaldi, council president, who sends her regards, she had to be in negotiations and couldn't be here tonight, but if you guys want to, if you have something that you want to ask first, want to get something answered before next week, before emails, feel free to do so now. Okay, thank you. Oh, Doug?
Hi, my name is Doug Mayo. I'm a city counselor for Precinct 8. Are the councilors going to get a presentation, or copies of this presentation before the vote next week?
Would you like one? Would you like them?
Absolutely.
Then, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Anything else over there? All right, yes, Penny. Counsel, excuse me, Counselor Ricketts.
Yes.
Sorry.
Hello, my name's Penny Ricketts, Vice President of City Council. First of all, I just want to thank you for the presentation, and Counselor Mayo, that's an excellent question, because not all of us are here tonight. And because we're not all here tonight, I would totally understand if many of you followed into the 19th meeting, so I think if we at least all had the presentation, we would be on the same page. And before you all start with your comments, I just want to thank you for all the phone calls and the emails, and I know you have another week of them coming. Thank you for all the nice brain work, I needed it, but I'm trying to answer every one of you, and I just want to let you know that I appreciate it. Whether you're for it or against it, it's very important to me that you all chime in. So keep those emails coming, I sincerely mean that, and thank you very much for taking the time and for being here.
To the counselor, on the question of getting the presentation to you, it will be in paper form, it is a tremendously large file, it cannot be emailed due to the size of the video. So I will get it to you in email, in paper form as soon as I can.
I also understand that GCTV is filming this tonight, and it'll start being played tomorrow, I think tomorrow online and the next day actually on the air. Okay, it's now your turn. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Sun.
Counselor Sun, Precinct 1. What I'm going to say is, everybody's got to have an open mind, you know, no matter what, whether it's yes or no or whatever, because we're to help the town as counselors to look forward to the input of all the town. And we can't do it unless everybody speaks their piece. Now, I got, yes, you know, people encouraged me to vote yes, and people vote no, but I have to have not only input on whether yes or no, but those that would be willing to donate money, so it's not such a burden on the town, to be willing to do it by their own financial needs, because the more money that comes in, the less is a tax burden on the people in the town.
Well, Counselor Sun, I'll say that we have 1,348 names listed out front, and that's going to be a good place to start. So here we go. We have a sign-up list, and the first person on that list is Bob Pura.
So let me, Bob Pura, resident in Greenfield in Precinct 5. So I want to thank first all of you for the hard work that you've put into it, the leadership, the detail, all of that, so thank you. And I want to thank all of the counselors for your willingness to serve and your openness to hear what the community has to say. So I really do believe that all of us in this room today, all of us, understand the importance of a library to our community. We all understand the civic, the social, the cultural, the intellectual, and the spiritual value of a library. In short, library builds and sustains community, and I think we all get that. I think you'll hear about each of those pieces tonight. So for me, the question I want to deal with then is the money, the economics of this proposal. A quick story about GCC. A quick story about GCC. So as we got to the core renovation, the proposal that we gave Boston was, they asked for three different plans, 18 million, 24 million, 32.5 million. Boston, the Board of Higher Education, in their wisdom, wrote back and said, "18 million is what we could justify based upon the numbers of your community and the numbers of your school." And we talked about accessibility. We talked about our library and accessibility, and that's where the fight happened. Ultimately, the Board of Higher Ed recommended $18 million for our project. The night before it came out of the Education Committee, then Representative Chris Donilon called up my house, and he said, "Bob, it's coming out tomorrow morning. We didn't know when it was going to come out. The Board of Higher Ed recommended 18. What's the number you want?" I said, "We want 32.5 million." We want everybody in our college and in our community to have access to those books in the library that we have. We want an elevator from the front door that gets to the library. We transformed, because of what Chris Donilon did that next day to get 32.5 million for our core, we transformed what was probably the least accessible building in all of higher education to an award-winning building for accessibility in higher education, of which our library is its heart and its soul. So we're proud of that. It was a message to the community, to our students, our faculty, and to our staff. The message was, "You deserve a first-class environment in which to learn." Another story, a quick story. 2008, the economy had crashed. And what did our local banks do in the weight of that psychological, emotional, and economic downturn? It was heavy for all of us at that time. Greenfield Cooperative Bank, Greenfield Savings Bank, both began to build. They invested, and they sent a message that we're going to get through this in this community of ours, because they understood the importance of sending that message. More than the buildings itself, it was the impact of the message. Let's all think for a moment about what this community would be without that new OR at the Franklin, without the new college, the new courthouse, the transportation center, the train station, the parking lot, or this building and this high school. The truth, dear neighbours, dear council, is that our community is in an economic downward spiral. Our businesses can't survive without customers, and people don't want to live in towns with empty storefronts. And both lead to fewer services. That is not the formula for sustainability. We can't afford to sit by and watch what becomes of Greenfield. We need to plan for and invest in what we want for Greenfield to be. No is easy. No is easy. Yes takes courage. This is more than a vote on a library. It is a message vote. Let's turn that downward spiral of negativity into a positive message of optimism and hope. Please vote yes on this library for Greenfield, and like a rising tide, it will lift us all. Thank you.
It is so good to live in a community that cares, to be here with all of you tonight. To be one in a community that cares for its people and what they need is the greatest joy. I was born in 1936 at the local hospital. I've lived here all my life. I've served Greenfield eight years on a school committee. I was the first council president that the town would have. I've served on the GCC board for 10 years. I know our community and its people. I'm not going to speak about the money. The issue for us is the soul and culture of our community. Today, I serve people as a deacon at Holy Trinity. We have 400, 500 people who come in who need to keep up and want to make this a great community, just as all of you do. The library we have is one of two buildings that has, everyone in the, in the community has access to. The other building, we don't want to go to because it's the hospital. This is the one we want to bring our children to. We want to go to when we have a question. This is the one we want to gather at. This is the one that we can be together, whoever we are, is always there for us, and it is not what it should be. That, when I was born in 1936, the building that we're talking about demol, not demolishing, but saving, but moving away from, was the library. That's 83 years ago. Times have changed. Information has changed. The world has changed. Our library programs inside that building have changed, but they cannot fulfill the full needs of what our community, you, and me, and our children, need. There's a moment now, a moment to say no or yes. If we say no now, no change will take place for at least 10 years. If you say yes now, we will be back to where we need to be, continuing to build a community for every one of us. I want to thank the councillors for coming and listening tonight. And I want to thank, as Bob did, all the hard work that's gone on to bringing this library to us. And I want to thank every one of you for coming together tonight so that we could be one in support of this wonderful project. We'll give, and we'll get.
So not only were you wonderful, Joe, but your talk was 3 minutes and 2 seconds. You set a great example. So we're going to see if Will Roberts can follow your lead. After Will, just queuing up will be, as we're going with former council presidents, we're on a little roll, we're going to have David Singer.
Hello councillors, hello Greenfield. I really appreciate your being here and listening to us tonight. I had a brilliant speech written, and Joe just blew me out of the water, so really, what I want to say is we've done so much recently to improve the intellectual, social, and economic capital of this community. It's happened with the high school. It's happened with the courthouse. It's happened with the transportation center. And a library is a chance to continue doing that, to continue building the intellectual, social, and economic capital of this community. And I really urge you to support this. Everybody, everything that has been said is absolutely true, but it comes down to you. You are the stewards of our public places. And we need you to support this particular case. Thank you very much.
And after David, Danielle Leterno.
Hello, everybody. I want too to thank all the leaders that have brought this before us, and I want to thank all the councillors for coming and for listening to all of us. And of course, all of you who've come out tonight for this. It's fantastic. I'm going to keep it short as well. My name's David Singer. I live on Brunel Street in Greenfield. I too sat on the council as you are, and was a president of the council for a couple of years. And I know how difficult it is to make these kinds of decisions about big-time spending. But let me say this. You are aware that the library is outdated, and it's not handicapped, accessible, and will cost millions to upgrade. You know that this library has been planned for many years. Therefore, the borrowing has been anticipated in the capital budget and the city's debt percentage. You know that the council voting yes is critical to the implementation of the building of the new library. You can see from this outpouring of support that it is the will of the people of Greenfield to have a new library. We, the people of Greenfield, are demonstrating to you, our elected leaders, that now is the opportunity, in the form of state funding, local donations, and town spending, to raise ourselves up as a community and together be proud that it is this generation that is being given the chance to build a library that will last for the next 100 years. In essence, it is your duty to vote yes for the new library, and you should all consider yourselves privileged to be able to vote yes on such an important undertaking. Thank you.
Danielle Leterno, and on deck is Peter Gary.
Hello, I'm Danielle Leterno, Greenfield resident. I was also a city councillor from 2006 till 2011. We actually might have been talking about the library in 2011. I am going to take my three minutes to quickly address three common concerns that people have regarding the library project. I'm actually going to amend what I had originally planned because you answered all of our questions so well earlier. The first is that we cannot afford it. That's not true. Councillors should know a little bit about this. In order to maintain a good bond rating, which is basically the municipality's version of a credit score, the city has a policy of keeping the debt within a range of 8% to 10% of the general operating budget. You know what I'm talking about. Having debt in this range keeps our bond rating high. So like a credit score, the bond rating is negatively affected by having both too much and too little debt activity. So staying within this range keeps us away from a debt exclusion vote, as we said earlier, and it eliminates the need for much of a tax increase because the library can stay within that range. The additional money needed for this project can be raised in other ways, as was stated earlier. And according to the Greenfield Planning and Construction Committee, they looked at the additional funds needed for the library project in conjunction with the new public safety complex and other existing debt, and it still all fits well under the 10%. There's a chart. I can send it to you, Isaac. That's number one. Number two, modern libraries are passe. Modern, I mean, excuse me, libraries are passe. Modern libraries are actually more than a place to borrow books, as was stated earlier by our beloved librarian. Our library provides membership passes to area museums. The Friends of the Library runs the 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program, the poet's poetry contest, the Friends of the Greenfield Public Library Spelling Bee. These are gathering places for meetings and clubs already, even in its current state. We can make them maker spaces for artists, and these can be great places for teens and tweens, who I have some in my family who are really looking forward to a place to gather. There are over 700 nonprofits in Franklin County. Nonprofit organizations use libraries in particular ways. According to a recent Pew Research survey, 46% of people who visited a library in the past year did so to use a research database. Research databases are very hard to combine, and in fact, we have to go to Springfield to access some of these now. They're very expensive for nonprofits. You cannot get these on your iPhone. Also, volunteers for organizations like, for example, Big Brothers Big Sisters, they may gather together at places like the library. According to Time Magazine, one quarter of the nation is still without broadband. In 2016, just prior to GSAT's launch, estimates were that 40% of Greenfield residents did not have internet. 40%. The 2017 census reports 13% of Greenfield residents live in poverty. Basically, what I'm saying is I'm guessing that most of these folks don't have access to Amazon Prime to purchase books and don't have access to e-readers. But the good news is if they do have an e-reader, they can also download ebooks from the Greenfield Public Library. The third one, and I know I'm over time, is that we have other priorities in our town first. For example, the fire station. Again, I just want to refer to part one, and I also want to say this. We are smart, intelligent people. You are smart, creative, intelligent leaders. We all know that things, we can do more than one thing at a time. We can have a public library that meets 21st century standards. We can also have a new fire station. We can also have a beautiful skate park. We can also have a beautiful new high school, and we can also have all of these things. Essentially, there's no reason to vote no. There's only reasons to vote yes.
Thank you. Peter Gary, on deck, Terry Ruggles.
Hello, everybody. What a great job you've all done, and the turnout is fantastic. I was involved as a selectman, actually for five terms, so that gets me right up about 15 years. And we dealt with the library in the '95, '96 time. And we put an effort in to find a location for it. Unfortunately, it was turned down. So here we are, 23, 24 years later, and I think it's time that we go forward with it, get it done, and I hope you'll all vote yes. Thank you.
After Mr. Ruggles, we're going to have Sophia Regary.
Good evening, and thank you all for being here, and thank you council members for taking your time to be here on a night which is not an ideal driving night. I want to reflect a little bit for a few moments on someone who was a volunteer at the library, which I was for about six years. I never handled a book, not once. I cleaned and restored CDs, DVDs, and saved money. Never handled a book, okay? Libraries change. They change all the time, and they're going to continue to change. It's about time that we caught up. I worked in a cramped workspace, often with three or four other people. None of us had the proper room to do what we needed to do. It was often too hot or too cold, depending on the weather outside. Didn't work right. Didn't work right for the people visiting the library or the people working at the library. In wandering the halls, I would see the problems that the disabled had in access from outside and within the building. The slopes they had to come up, the slopes they had to go down, the door restrictions, et cetera. I saw them every day. I saw mothers with strollers having the same problem, often with a child on one hand and a child in the stroller. Almost impossible to get around some places in the library. Kay Lyons, who many of you know, runs wonderful book programs for children. We do a lot with Harry Potter. I've played Dumb, I've played Dumbel Tor numerous times. And it's for the kids, but it's also for families, and we have, we'll have 30, 40 families there, and we have to move from one scene to another in that library, through narrow halls, through an elevator which is inadequate. So it's impossible to get these programs quickly from one area to another. A new library would alleviate a great deal of that. We could have programs that would flow nicely and work nicely for children and families who want to come and see their children take part. It would be essential. It's difficult to hear if you're in the library and you're hearing a presentation. My wife is hearing challenged. And there are areas where meetings are held now where you just cannot hear. More efficient meeting spaces would be a priority, and will be a priority. I just want to thank the council members who are here this evening and who have braved the weather. It's the time to vote yes. It's the time to think future. It's the time to think future, and it's the time to think giving this facility to the
I think approaching now is Sophie Garry, is that right?
I'm sorry to say I am not Sophia Garry. My name is Joseph Garry from Bernison Road. And I asked my daughter to speak because I am passionate about this project because of the future of our town, and that's why I'm here. I will give money, and I hope you vote yes for this project. Thank you.
And that will be followed by Jess Pollak.
Hi there, I'm Sarah Ahern Belmer, and I'm here with a couple of my friends from the Teen and Tween Art Club, which I started just about a year ago at the library. We have a lot of fun about once a month playing with glue guns and glitter and collage and paint. The glue guns are a big hit. A couple of my favorite faces to see are a couple kids who are the councillors' daughters here, and it's just a really fun time to get together, a safe place for kids to come and create. I grew up here in Greenfield, moved away and am back, and I have two young daughters, and to think that we could have a new space for my kids and for those other kids in this town would be just absolutely amazing. I know these girls might want to say something. Do you feel like you want to say something? It's okay. Our message is we need a room for glitter. There, we did a-- it's true. Just to think, I have some notes here that, let's see, to create a space for, to see the space up there that would be dedicated to teens and tweens would just be really special. It's a place that I wish I had growing up. To give teens a safe and creative space to learn and grow, I think would be really important for this town. So please vote yes, and thank you all for being here.
Hi, hi, everybody. My name is Jessica Pollak. This is rather low. I'll just shrink. I live in Precinct 4 at 69 Norwood Street with my daughter Ruby, who is seven, my daughter Maple, who's with my husband, and I also am here representing my mother, who lives in Precinct 5 on Congress Street, who's unable to be here for the same reason why she can't access the public library, is that she has mobility issues, and with the slippery weather, it's not possible. I am also the librarian here at Greenfield High School, but previously I worked for the Greenfield Public Library for over nine years. While working there, I needed to call 911 when a child tripped on the uneven threshold in the doorway between the children's room and the main room of the library. This child split open his head because a house built in 1797 is not suited to be a public library. I recall the patron who visited the library daily, carrying an oxygen tank. When he entered the library, he would be wheezing and gasping, needing to sit immediately to recuperate from climbing the stairs at the entrance of the library. I remember a woman who fell down the step at the entrance of the picture book room. Often, we were asked if there was additional seating because every chair was being used. I remember the difficult decisions to remove books from the shelves to make room for new titles, even though the old books were still circulating regularly. When we did programs, we would worry what to do when the attendance exceeded the safety limits assigned by the fire department. We had to close the library several times when the heat didn't work. If the air conditioning broke, we also had to close since we could not open the windows as they were screwed shut during the building restoration in attempt to preserve this historic gem. I recall a major plumbing leak that left a waterfall pouring from the second floor for many hours over a weekend, thankfully caught by Kay Lyons, who came in during her off-hours and saw what was happening. We were closed and it damaged many library materials. There were crumbling walls, broken stair railings, and a circulation desk that continues to be moved every few years because there is simply no correct place for it. This is just a bit of the behind-the-scenes look, the dirty laundry, of what it's like to work in the current library building and how inadequate it is. It is simply too expensive to maintain as a public library due to the heavy wear and tear. The building is a liability on the grounds of safety and ADA noncompliance as well. I am the mother of young children who should be in bed right now. And I want to say, and I hear that, and I'm almost done, that for every one of us who made it here, there are countless parents who had to be at home putting their children to bed. I felt it was imperative to come tonight and a great lesson for my daughter to share with you my perspective on why it is essential to vote yes for a new public library. I've already emailed all of the town councillors about my personal reasons for wanting a new library, and I hope you all have a chance to read that before the vote. But I want to thank you for coming here and for giving us all a chance to speak.
You know, I think we've heard enough from the adults for the moment. What about we hear from some teenagers? What about Rachel Cronin Townsend? Oh, I'm sorry, then, forget you. What about Sager Cronin Townsend? What about any of you kids in the front? Feel free to come up, and let's hear from you.
So my name is Sage, not Sager. So I think that it's really important that people, especially teenagers, have a place to meet and books to read, and I think it's great that we can go to the library and find new things that we're interested in, and I think that that would be a lot easier if we had a new building and more space. But I actually also have a question. I was wondering, I was looking at the plans, and I was wondering if you had any plans
The simple answer is yes. It's a little bit more complicated than larger toilet that we showed you down on the first floor, but on the second floor, we have individual toilets. And an individual toilet, we can label it as men, we could label it as women, or we could just label it as toilet, which is the one that I like the best. And then you could use whatever you would like, which I think is just the perfect solution for a public library. I don't have enough room to do that on the lower level. I need to have enough toilets in order to meet the plumbing code, but every opportunity that we can, that we have to do that, we certainly will try to do that. It's great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Sage, that was a great question. Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Heather. I go to Greenfield High School. I'm becoming a library intern with Ms. Pollak, and I would think it would be great to have a new library because the maker space that we have upstairs in our Greenfield High School library is like the best thing you've ever seen in a library. We have cublets that you can code. We have like things, I'm learning how to knit right now because of this library upstairs. And having a maker space in our public library, I think, gives a lot of younger children a chance to learn how to do new things. And also, it's, this one we have right now is not handicapped accessible. Part of my crutches, and it's hard for me to get like around and stuff, but I think having a new building would be great for everyone and every type of disability, everything. I would very appreciate it, and a lot of people out here would too.
Any other teenagers who want to talk?
Okay, um, whoa, that's. I'm Felicia. I also go to this high school, and I also have a lot of friends who would love to have a new library, even my brothers. And when I bring my little brother and sisters down here, I would want to take them, maybe during the summer, and like, so they can do things that they would want to do, but they can't do when they are with my aunt, so. And not just that, it's just like, I have my dad who wants to learn how to speak more English and read more English, so I think it would be good for him to like have that kind of opportunity and like have that kind of resource in a library, which in this library he can't really get to because like he can't really walk upstairs, upstairs all the time because he has a condition where he isn't supposed to be walking that much. So I think it would really be great for him and my siblings and my friends to have that kind of space where they can have easy access and like have opportunities to do like group works and projects in those meeting rooms and like, there's just like a lot of good things about having a new library for us. Thank you.
Awesome. Don't be nervous.
Hi, I'm Zach. I go to also Greenfield High School, and my biggest thing about Greenfield Library is that it's not handicapped accessible. My grandmother loves the library, and she now can't go into it because of, she's handicapped, she actually can't. She has oxygen tanks, is in a wheelchair, and there's no way to get into the library without, yeah.
Thank you. Deb Chown. Deb Chown, are you in the room?
Hi, I'm Deb Chown, and I've lived in Greenfield almost my entire life, and I've been a taxpayer in Greenfield for over 30 years. I support a new library. I'm also the director of the Naaman Watson Library at Greenfield Community College, and I've heard that some folks, including some of our elected officials, see no need for Greenfield to have a new public library as we have a public library at GCC, and people can just go there. I mean, a library's just a library, right? For me, that's like saying a doctor is just a doctor. I mean, they all went to medical school. So let's, I guess it would be okay to have a cancer patient go to a pediatrician for treatment. I don't think that would work very well, nor at all be appropriate. While it is true that we all come from the same library tree and that we share basic values of the profession, we are on distinct branches of that tree, do very different work, have very different missions, serve very different demographics, and are funded very differently. And yes, we are partially funded because we're a state institution, but I'd like to emphasize that word, partially funded. We're open to the citizens of the Commonwealth, but that's true of any public higher education institution, from UMass Amherst to Cape Cod Community College. As an academic library, our primary mission is to serve the study and research needs of our students and to provide services to faculty and staff. Our collections are academic in nature, supporting our curriculum, and what we do, we do quite well. So yeah, you can come and use our space, but be reminded, we're there to serve our students. You might even want to call them paying customers first, as we are supported primarily by their tuition and fees. Here's a brief list of things that we cannot provide to Greenfield Public Library residents. Current fiction, DVDs, audiobooks, music CDs, museum passes, travel guides, GED and other standardized testing material, children's storybook hour, the absolutely fantastic 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program, programming for children and teens, Canopy streaming video, and the ever-popular public library help with genealogical research. Public library patrons can get a community borrowing card from us, but they cannot access our databases from off-campus because we are contractually required to only give that access to our students and faculty and staff. These are just a few of the differences between an academic and a public library. And the GPL has a much broader range of collections and services that they offer to each and every resident of Greenfield. I hope in this short period of time, I've demonstrated that public libraries and academic libraries are separate entities doing very different things and serving very different populations. As an academic librarian, I have the deepest respect for the Greenfield Public Librarians, and I'm also a little in awe of them. And I unequivocally support a new public library, and you should too.
Maybe we should just stop there, but no, I think, so Barry McCulgan is next, and then Joan Featherman after that.
Good evening. If I seem a little awestruck, it's because I worked in this room for 15 years. I directed plays on that stage, and I am just absolutely stunned by how beautiful this room is. When I was here, this building was a wreck. If you were privileged enough to visit this building 10 years ago, you probably would have seen trash barrels in the hall collecting water coming out of the ceiling. If you opened a closet, you could have seen mold, termites. If you went from the north wing to the south wing, or whatever way it goes, you would have gone from cold to hot to warm to very cold, all in one trip. You could see the dollar signs going out of the chimney in this building. Single pane windows. Whoever had the idea to take this building down and build the old building down and build the new building was a very intelligent person. And you are sitting in the middle of this brand-new project, this wonderful 21st century building. I am an assistant librarian at Greenfield Public Library. I've been there for three years. I've made tons of library friends. I've been in every part of the building. It's not quite as bad as Greenfield High School used to be, but it's not real good either. And I won't bore you by going over all of the things that you saw in that video. I implore you to keep in mind, however, just how difficult it was to go down that hill in a wheelchair, up the hill to the elevator, try to get into the bathroom, to negotiate the stacks. You saw that if she went through the stacks, she couldn't turn left or right to go and make her way back up the, she had to back up. That building has outlived its usefulness. It's a beautiful, beautiful building. I've loved it for 40 years. Change is hard. Nobody wants to see that building not be the library, but everybody knows that building should not be the library. That building should be something else. It should be some, somebody with money should buy that building, renovate that building, and turn it back into the beautiful, useful building that it could be. But it has outlived its usefulness, and it can no longer support the mission of Greenfield Public Library. So I would say, I think everybody here is pretty much on the same page, and I hope that's the case, but I would hope that everybody would contact your ca-- that's the case, but I would hope that everybody would contact your counselors and ask them very politely and very nicely, please support the new Greenfield Public Library. Thank you.
I'm just going to, uh, take what Barry says as an opportunity to do this. I'm just curious if people who came here to support the library would be willing to just give a show of hands right now, just so we see what percentage of the room are library supporters? All right, I won't ask those who came against to put your hands up. I don't want to put anybody in an uncomfortable position. Uh, okay, Joan Featherman.
Hi, Joan Featherman here. And I could tell you 20 more reasons why I would love for you to vote yes for this library, and you've heard a lot of them and you're going to hear more. But what I really want to say is that this is what a well-functioning democracy looks like. We, the people, have entrusted you to take care of our town and our buildings and our services, and to make sure that all of our citizens have access to the best services of various kinds that a town can provide, or a city, excuse me, can provide. So we elect you, and now we trust you. Take good care of us, use common sense. This is a point in history when we are being given a tremendous gift by the state. This is not happening again, not in my lifetime, I know. So please, vote yes. You will have a lot of support in this community when you vote in this new library. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Cronin Townsend, who is not a teenager?
But I teach them. So I'm Rachel Cronin Townsend. I'm a Greenfield resident. I also teach technology at the middle school. I spoke with you a few weeks ago. You heard my story. I think my kid came home from the library with a ukulele. Like, that's great. I was in a room that was scary as heck in the basement. It was like, there was yellow peeling paint, and the rug is nasty, and the pipes are all scary, and it was awful. But I was there to support a friend who was giving a book talk, and while that was happening, a whole bunch of kids came running out of another really scary room across the hall because they were really excited about an event that they were in, and they were excited to see me because I was their teacher, and we went out there and we were like, hugging and talking, and like, the bathroom was gross, and the, I wouldn't want to drink out of that water fountain, and like, the kids are like, scary on the stairs. And my kid came home with a ukulele. And so all of these things need to be better. They just need to be better. And I am asking you, please, 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 just make it better. Thank you.
Deb Deskovic? Deb Deskovic, are you still here?
Hi, I'm Deb Deskovic. I'm a resident of Northfield, but I grew up in Greenfield and I've used the library all my life. I love the library. You know, I've always admired the external, external exterior of the building. It's just a beautiful building and a wonderful place to be. But it wasn't until I started working with the friends 15 years ago that I realized that a building built in the 1700s is really not a place for a public library. You've heard about all the accessibility issues, the maintenance issues, the cost of bringing this building up to code. We've got $9.4 million from the state. You've heard so many wonderful arguments about the economic lift that this is going to give the community. Please vote yes for a library in Greenfield.
Flo Stahl?
There's a little girl here named Bryn. She's very young, I'm sure she has a little child. Did she make the call?
Bryn, come on! Come on up!
I'm sorry.
No, you're not. Come on, babe.
Who needs bedtime when you have civics in action, right?
Hi, my name is Bryn Law. I live on High Street. I go to Federal Street School. I am a regular user of the library. A couple reasons we need a new library is even though it's a beautiful building, it's getting too small. It's also kind of falling apart. The heat's not working, and it's really cold. So please vote yes. Thank you.
I know that as Greenfield City Council, you are constantly bombarded with requests, each one having merit and each one benefiting an important part of Greenfield. I also know you have much on your plate. We look to you for many things: clean water, safe roads, rubbish disposal, social services, protective services, to name a few. And now we are looking to you to proceed with a much-needed new library. By now, you have heard from hundreds of people why there should be a new library. Even I, a relative newcomer to Greenfield, know this project is complex and requires a series of interconnecting events before one shovel full of ground can be redistributed. But the return on investment is huge. How do I know all this? Because I've been there. I have served on the town council, board of finance, and water pollution control authority of a municipality in another state. But the issues were basically the same. The taxpayers' concerns were basically the same. The decisions were never easy, but we had the courage to do what was right for the community. Somehow, a community and its leaders know when deliberation and delay, however justifiable, is over and the time has come for action. This great and welcoming community has been so helpful and kind to me. Greenfield needs a new library, and it needs that process to begin now. Let's build a new library. Thank you.
Emily Clark? Is Emily still here?
Hi, so I'm Emily Clark. I've been a teen volunteer at the public library for, I think, three years now. And... Thank you. And I think the teenagers need a new library because I guess we're in that age where we're finding like, ways to deal with the world. And we're like, the most like, malleable in like, how we deal with things. Because when something gets hard, we can either like, turn to unhealthy coping mechanisms like drugs and alcohol, or we could go to the library. I don't think the library impacts our brains in a negative way. So I think the town councilors should vote yes for a new library for the teens, so, yeah.
And then after that, Archie Naaman.
I am a relatively new person living in the Greenfield area, but I had been encouraged by several of the people in the library to indicate why I go to the library once a week, twice a week, sometimes three times a week. And so my information might be a little different than what you have just heard. So I'm an avid NPR listener, and I like to jot down quotes referring to libraries. And two of my favorites are, "Libraries are palaces of the people." And the second one is, "If you want to experience the heart of a community, you go to the library." Personally, I appreciate the book selections. New books, large print books, any type of needlework book, any books suggested by the children's librarian for my grandson. My adult daughter recently asked that we visit the library prior to her back surgery so she could have a selection of mysteries available as she recuperates. Monday of this week, I was surprised to see a new book selection focused on a county in Pennsylvania where I was born and raised. Specific to the presidential election, I have almost completed reading the book, The Forgotten, and I plan to send copies to my brother and my sister. I had been involved with a local social service agency as a volunteer sewing coordinator program. I had, the agency would choose the participants, and I was responsible for everything else. We were chosen to do a presentation before the Economic Security Task Force connected with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. Samples of the sewing work done by the participants in my program were shown at the presentation. And, um, prior to the meeting, I had requested from the, from the reference librarian if there were any, any sewing books that I could get in Spanish, because most of my people either didn't speak English at all, or they spoke very little, but we got along just fine. And so the books did arrive the day we were going to do the presentation, and the three women that came with me to this presentation, where there were 40 groups of people from the entire state of Massachusetts, they were given the opportunity to express how they felt about the program. And the Spanish books that they read as we were driving to the program helped them say, you know, they didn't know that they existed. So the potential for having another group of persons having an opportunity to use the new library would certainly be appreciated by a great many people in the community. And, um...
Thank you, Mary. You're well over, almost four minutes now. Thank you so much. And Anne Mayo will be on deck after Archie.
I'm Archie Naaman, uh, live in 46 Madison South Room. I've been a resident for Greenfield for 56 years. The Greenfield Public Library is open to everyone. It offers its riches, its opportunities to learn to everyone: young, old, able-bodied, shut-ins, everyone. Here is what it did for my mother. About 35 years ago, access to the Greenfield Public Library helped my mother... Okay? Better? About 35 years ago, access to the Greenfield Public Library helped my mother, a woman with 10 children and an immigrant born in Turkey, to learn to read. At the age of 70, literacy was not an option for poor girls in Turkey. Embarrassed and ashamed, she cried when she couldn't not read the signs identifying the ladies' room at the airport in Basel. She was determined to learn to read. As soon as she mastered the basics, she went to the public library's children's room, where she was warmly welcomed. She took out alphabet books and then quickly moved on. She went with joy when she could read a children's book to our children about President Kennedy. Now, with the needs ever growing, the library does not have enough space for all the services and programs it offers to people like my mother and to everyone else. Imagine not being able to read. Please vote yes for our new Greenfield Public Library so its riches continue to be available to everyone. Thank you.
I'm Anne Mayo, Precinct 8, and I'll give you the cliff notes of my speech. So, um, Greenfield must take advantage of this grant, greatly diminishing the cost to taxpayers of an accessible public space, even for guests, obviously, of the library, but also for staff. One of the things the staff learned when they got wheelchairs to help some of us understand that it might be not as accessible as we thought, was they realized their workspaces were not even accessible. We cannot be an educated, viable community without this resource. I expect that our counselors will make the wisest decision. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, we still have probably 20 to 30 more speakers on the list. I really don't want to shut off anybody from having an opportunity to speak. I can't help but notice that, uh, that over 300 people who started are no longer here. So, um, if people do want to speak, please come forward and try to speak quickly. I'm going to stop calling names at this point and just ask people to come up, and I'll let you do it for a little while, and then, um, we'll see where we're at. So I don't mean to be rude. I know that you've all come, and I don't want anybody here not to have an opportunity if you want it. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Paul Keller, and I've lived in Greenfield now for 50 years this year. And I've seen a lot of changes in the town over the years. And one of the biggest things, of course, this building, I didn't realize it was bad off as it was until I toured it, uh, just before they demolished it. And one of the things that really struck me as being very bad in the town is that when the police department was located on Main Street. And what a nightmare that that was for them before they finally moved out of there. So we must do this. This must happen. It's like buying one, get one free. Get that grant because it reduces the debt, hey, after whatever we've been told. We must do it. My personal opinion, it's only my personal opinion, when you look at that library you have right now, and look, it doesn't even look like a regular library. It looks more like a house. That being said, they worked well with it for many years. But quite frankly, I go in there, I don't use it very much, but anytime I go out in there, I really don't want to use it because it, you go in there, it's a nightmare. We're asking these people, and my, the people that work there, we're asking them to work in a dump. We must move this. Thank you.
My name is Marian Kellner. I'm here to support the construction of a new library, just as the state of Massachusetts has shown its support by using taxpayer money from all the residents of the Commonwealth. I support everything that's been said so far, so I just have a very brief comment. This is an amazing opportunity. We know from our own lives that when we make a commitment to something new, all sorts of forces conspire together to support that commitment. It works on an individual level as well as on a community level. So I just want to share a quote from Goethe, a famous philosopher, who said, "Whatever you can do, or dream you can do, begin it. Boldness has genius, power, and magic in it." Boldness has genius, power, and magic in it."
My name is Doug White. I live at 237 Conway Street, over by Foster's Market. And I've lived in Greenfield now about 10 years. I'm originally from a kind of, bit of a suburban town in New Jersey called Westfield, so I've gone from Westfield to Greenfield. And I have to tell you, Westfield had really, truly outstanding schools, libraries, parks, and recreation facilities. That town was a star, and everyone knew it, and we were very proud of that, in fact. And I'd like to see Greenfield be a star, because we can do it. And how many of you are aware of the fact that common sense is not that common? That might have been Plato or Socrates, but I got a feeling that this project fits the common sense paradigm of, let's do this while we can, because it's a great project. It's really needed. It's going to bring everybody together, you know, educationally, and especially, I would think socially, and in many ways, building community. And so, I really feel like it's worth doing, and we should do it. I'd like to encourage our council to vote yes on this when they get a chance. And let's remember that American ends, and I can, and if I can and you can, then we all certainly can. Let's do it.
Hi, I'm Joy Whitbeck. I live in Precinct 4, and I came here tonight so I could hopefully understand why so many people I respect and admire support this project. And to be honest, I'm still not on board all the way. I don't understand why we can't keep the library's current home and renovate it, expand it, and update it. A price tag of $7 million is a huge one, but $10 million is $3 million more, so it's a third more to do what we could do with the space we have. If we can't sell the building, the city will still be responsible to maintain that building, which has so many flaws that everyone talks about. And of course, we'd have no choice but to spend huge amounts of money on the new fire station or safety complex once that is displaced. It's so expensive, no one's even thrown a number out there of what that could possibly So, we have to take that. I know that we probably won't get that. The new land is still being reviewed and everything, so we probably wouldn't have a number on that until the state deadline comes, but we have to take that into consideration. I understand that the current building has some limitations and flaws, but it's also a wonderful structure full of history and character that we can embrace and improve. I was born here in Greenfield. I graduated Greenfield Public Schools, and I returned to town after college, where I now own a home and have two small children. I believe in the city, and of course, it's my home, but like everywhere, we're faced with many problems: economic, housing, and food insecurities, substance abuse, and lack of employment opportunities. I commute to Springfield every day. Our big problem for our community. I don't have an answer for these, but I know that millions of dollars, even just that $3 million difference, used appropriately in certain social services, can make a big difference in a lot of people's lives. I greatly value the, appreciate the value of an accessible and inviting library for all people, and that's what we've been fortunate to have in Greenfield all of my life. And we've had that without a shiny new building and without being millions of dollars in debt. So, I hope we really just think about it.
Thank you. Andy, hold on for a minute. I think Dan and maybe Phil want to just make a comment.
It's a great question, ma'am. The difference between the renovation of the existing structure and the new building is that the new building has additional programmable space that the existing structure doesn't. So, renovating the existing structure gives you what you have today, but albeit safe and accessible. You'll also lose about 30% of the current stacks that you have in the library, because to make them accessible means you're going to have less of them, because you're going to need wider aisles and turning spaces at the end. So, it's really hard to compare apples and oranges with regard to the two projects. The new building, the new building, the new building is designed in such a manner that it has sightlines so that the existing staff can man the new building. It is not designed so that it, to have increased staff. That is one of the things the MBLC encourages every library design to do, because in tough times, the libraries are usually at the beginning of the chopping block, in all communities, not just Greenfield. So, they do want to make the buildings designed such that you can use as few staff as possible.
Andy Rothschild, Precinct 2. Thank you all. Thank you all. I did want to make a couple economic inputs and then tell you why I'm speaking here. I assume that we would save money on energy costs with the new building, and I assume we would save on maintenance costs over the next 30 years in both cases. So, I think that money would add up quite a bit. The real reason I'm here tonight is because my wife Cindy told me to come here. She, I was going to say she asked me, but she told me. She's very, very passionate about this project, very, very excited about what this means for Greenfield. So am I.
There really isn't much else to say, but I did want to say, when I first came to Greenfield in 1987, while my husband was interviewing for a position, I and my two-year-old son went to check out the library to see if it was a town we wanted to move to. And the showing tonight and the efforts put forward by the committee in answering all these questions is absolutely one of the reasons why I still love Greenfield and am so proud of this community. Over and over again through the years I've been here, people have stepped up to the plate to move forward, and this is just the next project in mind. So, I thank you all for your efforts, and I do so hope this will pass. I think it is a very good thing for all of Greenfield. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Revan Shendler, resident of Greenfield, and thank you for all the information tonight. I really wanted to support the resident who just spoke. Now, I just want to point out that all evening, this is the only voice that has been allowed to speak with substantial questions about the project. And I think that a well-functioning democracy invites a range of opinions about something, not just a loud chorus of agreement. I love the library. I like the idea of having a modern, accessible space, and I understand that the councilors are making decisions about how to make fiscal decisions in a community that's really struggling with housing, with job opportunities, with addiction services. So, I know that we're not, this is not a discussion about that, but I really would have loved to see a greater range of opinion about the library and about how we take on debt and about what our priorities as a community are. Yes, we need a modern library. Yes, we need people to be housed and not homeless. So, I just wanted to applaud the courage. Even I, who have some experience with public speaking, am very anxious speaking in front of a group, all of whom don't want to hear what I have to say. So, I just want to applaud you for your courage, speaking up. Speaking up, not against the project, but just inviting a greater range of opinions, so that your councilors are well-informed about the range of opinion in our community. Thank you very much.
So, I for one, I for one am glad to hear what you had to say, and I appreciate your words. So, thank you very much. Anybody else? Roxanne?
Roxanne Weedagartner, and I echo Linda, there's not a lot to say. But I think what I would like to say is, what you've heard tonight is the passionate and proud voices of a community that wants to invest in its future and is asking you to invest in its future. And I applaud the two women who just spoke with their concerns and with their doubts for the same reason. You didn't say, "We don't need a new library." You said, "This is a community that struggles," and so, it is a difficult decision to make. But I think you have to look to the future. Nothing says the future like a room for glitter, or a makerspace where you can learn to code, or anything like that. But it is important to invest in the future, and what Bob Pura said at the very beginning, to say no is easy. To say yes often takes courage, and anybody who's ever served in town knows that. So, with apologies to my grandchildren who live in Littleton, at least they can come visit our new library. I'm asking you to have the courage to say yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Isaac? Oh, excuse me, Councilor Mass. Sorry.
I wanted to hear most everyone, and if there are more people who want to speak, I want to hear what they have to say, but I do have some questions at the end before you wrap up.
Okay.
Is this the right time? Counselor, former Counselor Laterno referenced a chart that the mayor gave us that was, showed the debt picture over the next 20 years. Are you familiar with that chart? That debt chart? Anyone up on the stage?
Well, we received this copy about the same time you did.
So, you move all the way out to the right side of it, and that incorporates 12, an estimated $12 million for a fire station, not a public safety complex, just a fire station. And it puts our debt picture at 2025 at approximately $12 million to the red, in excess of what we're able to bond without waiver. Is that a correct figure?
I, Councilor Mass, I cannot speak to the accuracy of the numbers provided by the city. I would expect that they were accurate. I know that the city is audited by the Department of Revenue every year, but I also know that these are really questions that need to be asked of the Finance Department. I'm sorry, but I can't.
I understand, and part of the reason why I'm asking these questions is because affordability is one of the things that's been talked about a lot tonight, as well as in, is part of our discussion. That same chart has an estimated growth rate of the operating budget of 2% a year. But my calculations, and I could be wrong, are that our, over the last 10 years, we've gone up about 1.6% per year. So, there was some question about whether or not operating costs would go up as a result of this. Are we anticipating, across the board, additional operating increases?
In the library?
In the municipality as a whole.
You're the town counselor, not me.
No, I'm just, I'm asking questions because the debt is related to the assumptions in that chart. The other question I had is, you had a, you talked about Athol as an example, and I was wondering if you could discuss that a little better. My understanding of the Athol library was it was an expansion of an existing historic Carnegie library that in 2011 cost about $8.7 million, and that the state did put in a little over $4 million in that project, even though it was an expansion of an existing historic building. Can you talk about how they overcame the need to reach building code in that particular project, if you know?
Well, I obviously can't talk about the particulars of that particular project, but the structure of that project, the Carnegie, the original Carnegie library, it wasn't built in 1789. Most Carnegie libraries were built in 1910 to 1920, and Massachusetts had, I think, 70 of them. I think 30 of them are still left. So, I can't answer that. I can't answer to the fact that we did the study for the Orange Library, which looks like a Carnegie library, but is not, and they constantly referring to Athol's success of their library. And it is an ad reno. You did apply for an ad reno in 1995. You know, we sent you a copy of that application, and you were denied by the MBLC. They will not invest money into your building. That doesn't mean you can't do it yourself and pay for it. That's why I tried to answer the lady's question on the $7 million versus the $10, because to do an ad reno would be more expensive than to do new. And that was studied when they did the grant process. With regard to the debt charge, the debt charts, you did get the same assumptions that the debt charts were made of. So, all those assumptions on page one, I think, are pretty self-explanatory. This is the second debt chart that I've received from the town of Greenfield. We received one from Elaine Kelly before she left, and I think she also presented to the council prior to her leaving her voluntary service. And that debt chart was just a little bit different and had a 1% assumption. So, that assumption is just an assumption. The actual appropriation is done by the councilors. I would believe, I would believe you would have it from that meeting. It was your meeting that was presented. I have a paper copy of it. I can certainly try to copy it and send it to you.
Do you have any other questions, Councilor Mass? Okay. Anybody else have questions or comments? Go on, once. Oh, we got one.
I'll be quick. My name's Jim Henry. I was, I'm a Greenfield native. Hard for me to believe, I've been away from this great town for about 16 years. Just moved back here a month ago. And when I was involved here before, one of the committees that I chaired was actually the committee that tried to build a library here in this town. And some people forget, it was also a senior center they were trying to build at the same time. And as we know, that failed. In the years that have passed, we've taken care of many of our municipal needs, and the town has moved forward. And through it all, the library has waited its turn. The senior center's got a brand-new home. It's a beautiful facility. We've got a new, the Greenfield Community College looks outstanding, the courthouse looks awesome, and the town has moved forward. But through it all, the library has waited its turn, and it's the library's turn to become the priority. I'm also a professor, and I'm also an author. I started writing books to my children. When my son, I have an eight, I have a son who just turned 20 years old a couple weeks ago. He's autistic. This kid, we couldn't get him to sit still. He had so much nervous energy. He was always moving, always moving. And then I read a Harry Potter book to him at bedtime, and I have never had such an easy time getting that child to sleep as I was reading books to him at night. And I would be proud when Greenfield builds a brand-new, state-of-the-art, 21st-century library to donate all copies of my books to this library, so you can read them to your kids and your grandkids and help put them to sleep like my books did for Tyler and Kristen and Isaiah and Jordan Henry. Thank you.
Jim, thank you very much, and it's good to see you, man. I haven't seen you in a while. So, I think this might be a good time to stop. And let me just say, as I began, that thank you, councilors, for coming tonight and spending your time to be with us and to listen to what folks have to say. Thank you all for coming, and I'd also remind you that six days to go before the vote, there's a council meeting scheduled at 7 o'clock here at the high school next Wednesday, and on their agenda is a vote for whether or not we're going to get our library. At 6 o'clock that same day, there'll be a town, excuse me, a Ways and Means Committee meeting here, followed by the Town Council meeting. I certainly would encourage all of you to come and to listen, and hopefully, to be able to leave that and... to leave that and celebrate. So, thank you very much, and drive safely on the way home. Thanks.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank. Visit them at four hundred Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at seven seven four three one nine one, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family. The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at seven seven two zero eight three eight and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since nineteen seventy-two. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com. Call them at four one three four two two one one four three. Peoples United Bank, located at forty-five Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at seven seven four three seven one three, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at twenty-three Fisk Ave. Call them at four one three seven seven two three one two two, or visit them online at solastoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.